We put Sharon's camera up on the screen if possible. Thank you.
Good morning.
Hey Sharon, good morning. Hey Sharon, can you speak one more time to check the sound?
Oh, sure. How is everybody doing this morning?
Doing great. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay, I think we are ready to go. Thank you, everybody for getting us all set up tech wise. I know it's a crazy thing every month, but thank you for your fortitude. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the December 2024 meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. We have everybody in attendance in the room and virtually, so we'll start with introductions. We do have a quorum. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president.
John Johnston, Vice President.
Judith Gwen.
Dorothy Waters.
Sharon, can you introduce yourself?
Sharon Fitzsimmons.
All right. So first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. We can entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'm going to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, thank you Dorothy. Thank you, John. Any discussion of the agenda? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstained? Nope, motion pass. Okay. It looks like Tressa's mic is not working.
Mine isn't either.
Okay.
I can hear John Johnson, but I could not hear Tressa.
Oh, good. Okay, so your mic is working. That's a relief. Next up is approval of the November 2024 minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'm so moved.
Thank you, Judith.
Second.
Thank you, John Johnston. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstained? Motion passes. Okay, we can move on to the approval of the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. Belinda, here we go. We can entertain a motion to approve the November 2024 monthly expense ledger. So moved. Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Tressa. Any discussion?
Could we have a rehash, please, of, I'm on page two, about a quarter of the way down. Admin phones. Is that the phones in this building?
Device awareness question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Those are the admin cell phones. As well as the mobile library's Wi-Fi service.
Thank you.
Any other discussion of the EALs?
Is driver training a requirement and for which vehicle?
That's for the mobile library and while we're not getting certificates, it's a very great idea for anybody who's going to drive that larger vehicle to have experience. We work with the college on that. People drive actually larger vehicles then and are then much more comfortable with the mobile library.
So that covers the paper we have assigned to it now?
Yes.
Potentially then that could be a recurring charge.
If we wish more people to learn, but at this point, we don't have any plans to do that. If staff were to move on, then a new staff member might, but it's not a particularly large expense per person.
Okay, thank you. Now, train everybody when we expect to train from the beginning. Thank you.
Okay, the prosecution rests, so I think we can vote on the motion to approve the EALs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? The motion passes. All right. No Treasurers report this month, but we'll be coming back in January, so we can move on from that. And let me turn it over to John for the Smurla report.
Yes, yeah, we met earlier this week. We had, as part of the, their president's report. It turns out the office there closed for two days during the Polaris outage back, was it end of September, early October? And, you know, that affected us here as well. So we had six responses for the RFP for strategic plan. So the standout corner of the staff was Greenway Strategy Group, so we voted to approve that, working with them. Made some cleanup, approved some cleanup language to the collection development policy and the privacy policy. And then we had a presentation on Microsoft SharePoint. Some of you might be familiar with that platform. To, they already use that for a lot of internal documents and they'll be adding access for the board to SharePoint and there'll be some training in January, I think. I've been using it at work, so hopefully that'll be a seamless transition for me, but but simply a place to put the board packets and other relevant information to store. And I think it's appropriate that in SharePoint, a collection of documents is called a library.
There we go.
See, we formed a finance committee for the board. There'll be just two members, Ron Croupy, who's the treasurer, and Carl Adler. And the board is still looking for the third member, community member from St. Mary's, so we'll take that up after the New Year.
John, was that selectee for the strategic plan, the same one we had used?
Yeah, I don't know. It is not. No. Can I ask, what is the finance committee doing? Like, what is the purpose or charge?
Many specifics, but they felt it was an appropriate step to take.
Got it.
Most likely they might be, you know, like involved in the, you know, just like maybe reviews of the audits, that sort of thing.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right, Michael, over to you for celebrations.
Well, good morning, St. Mary's County. I'm going to pass around Historic Solderly's End of the Year 2024 newsletter, just because it has a library connection. See if you can spot the library connection. First person who thinks you do, shout out for me. We're going to begin with milestones this morning, and we have quite a few. The first one is for Naomi Cole for 10 years of service, and she's here this morning, so I'll put that aside. Congratulations, Naomi, for your 10 years, and we're hoping for many more. Also, celebrating 10 years is Laura, who is here. So, in appreciation for 10 years of service at St. Mary's County Library, your dedication has made a difference for our customers and your fellow employees.
Laura, you've done an outstanding job and have made so many different initiatives better in a million different ways, and thank you for being part of the glue that keeps this whole ship together.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to Anna Williams and Katie Daly, who completed the Early Start Lottie, the Library Associates Training Institute. That helps people understand what the history of libraries, the role of libraries, how libraries are funded, among other things, what the Board of Library Trustees do. So in essence, it's kind of a very quick way to give people the exposure that they would have much more long term in a master of library information science program. It gets people to do great customer service. So congratulations, Anna and Katie. Our hoorays are for our staff day team, and three of you came to staff day, and Michael, you were unfortunately ill that day. But thank you so much for attending it. Thank you for planning and creativity, which produced a successful staff day. You helped us all learn the importance of play, created a comfortable way to staff to meet people they may not have met before, enhanced morale and teamwork, and created a lot of fun. Well done. So Amy Ford, Amy, thank you. Brittany Cornish, Amy Dickinson, Rita Baldwin, Andrea Monagold, Helen Kristoff, Tess Caldwell, Goldwasser, and Eleanor Piazza. Thank you, team, and we will be passing those certificates around.
And the person who does the agenda conveniently left her name off, Belinda. So she was also a part of that team. Make sure she gets recognized as well.
Belinda, how dare you?
I, yes, and if you had occasion to use these staff restrooms at Lexington Park, Amy and Belinda cleaned and tainted those themselves. So talk about above and beyond. We are blessed with an incredible staff here at St. Mary's County Library, some of whom are too modest to accept. Thank you. You have a small sheet here. So one of you asked to be able to log into the generic Library Board of Trustees email, which we've created. I do share any email that comes to that with you, but you're welcome to log in. You need to go to Outlook, and those are your login, Microsoft Outlook, those are your login credentials. Please do not share that. And it gets remarkably little traction. The typical thing is spam, which I just weed out. But we set that up in 2018 when the library was receiving national attention, international attention. In fact, I was getting emails and phone calls from Mexico. And so while your personal emails, if they have library business, could be subject to Freedom of Information Act request. Really, what we're doing is just trying to ensure that somebody out there who may not like library policy isn't emailing you directly. So we try to pass, you know, kind of business through that and then out to you, rather than having people emailing you individually. So that's the purpose for that. But again, you're welcome to log into it if you would like to. We are going to move right along to the informational segment. And the first thing on the agenda then is the budget review for this year, and you have that in your packet. So on page one, you'll see that 42% of the year has elapsed, and we have for personnel, that salaries spike, et cetera. We're at 38%. The only one that's kind of above 42 is substitutes, and that's no surprise. We call upon the substitutes as necessary. It's a relatively small portion of the budget. It's at, it's at 40%, even that's not above. Typically, the substitutes are spent by April, just because we have need of them when, you know, other staff members cannot be here and we need to fill the gap. Less pleasant to look at is the insurance. You'll see it's at 45%.
Yeah.
Actually, employees, are they per hour contractors? You just cut them a check for what they've earned and they're responsible for their own tax.
They are employees.
My question was, are they employees?
They are employees. We hire them as employees. They just work when needed, though. So they get paychecks only when they have hours on their time card.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so they are employees. They do get training. Our challenge with them is to kind of keep them current with what's going on, since they're not here every day. But they do provide an invaluable service for us. And in many cases, what happens is somebody applies for a job. We say, well, you know, we're promoting internally for this case. Would you like to be a substitute? They agree to come on. They're employees. They imply it. They then apply internally. And we also know their work, so it's a way to get into the library in many cases.
Recently, I think, a few months back, we had about 15 subs. We're down to five because we've hired them all. As permanent employees.
They become, they've gone from being substitutes to permanent.
Regular employment. So it is, when we do interviews, we choose somebody, but we have like three great candidates. We offer subs to the other two just to have them in the system, so that the next time they apply, they are an internal candidate.
Thank you.
So let's, so we may have a little bit of, as it were, vacancy credit in the budget come the end of the year. We'll see. Less pleasant, unfortunately, is health insurance, which is trending up this year. And we will make an adjustment for next year. I will have information later, however, about a rebate we got for the past year. So that may happen again. The way it works is we pay with the county an estimated amount, what the company thinks it's going to cost us this year. And at the end of the year, then, it may be that expenses were not quite so much, so we get a rebate back again. Or sometimes, unfortunately, it has happened that we've got to pay in more. So we'll be looking at that later today.
What is the health insurance company we use? Through the county, quickly?
It's Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay.
And there's no choice. That's the only one they offer?
Yes. And we've looked at getting our own. It's
No, we don't have enough employees.
Too expensive for us because we do not have enough employees to participate.
The only alternative we had would be to tell everybody that they can go to the Affordable Care Act, and and that would cost us substantially more and offer not quite as good a coverage, so. Over to page two. Lexington Park Electric is up. And their gas is up. So we had a remarkably warm autumn. And so we'll see how we do over the winter and spring going into the end of the fiscal year. You know, the, the electrical, I'm sorry, the AC is set rather low there, and people are often cold, but we cannot adjust it. We talked to the county about that, so we'll have to see if that continues. But when we look at next year's budget, we are going to have to put in an increase for Lexington Park Electric, more than likely. Other than that, looking down.
Michael?
Yes.
I always mention at the Smurla meeting of like them using, switching contractors for trash. I believe that came up here, but I could be wrong.
No, we are in at Charlotte Hall on that new vendor, and we're giving them several months. And the reason why is that their customer service ratings online were very poor, but they are offering a better cost. So we're giving them at least six months of service to see how they're doing. And if they continue to do well, which they are, right now, we will switch over to them for the entire library system. And we do have a contract with Waste Management that we're going to have to look, you know, how we get out of that if necessary. But yes, we are monitoring that, and we think that that may end up giving us some cost savings.
To note, we can only change the trash at Lexi. The one here at Lenartown is split with the county, and they chose the Waste Management. But we can change Lexi's, and of course, Halls has already changed.
So we'll see how we can do with that. I'm sorry?
Found your picture.
Ah, there we go.
Do I get a prize?
Uh, yeah, recognition. Yes. I was playing the ghost of Governor Plater for one of their productions at Solderly, and so they've got a picture of him in their newsletter for this year. It is educational, so the library was supporting the understanding of history. Other than that, things are going really actually pretty well on page three with our circulation collection. You see it says 31%. In fact, we have 51% as of, they started this week, encumbered. So the way this works is the publishers put out, hey, we're going to, we're going to publish these books. We place orders for them. And that encumbers the money, but we don't actually spend it till they come in. So there was a slowdown, and it wasn't just our vendor. It was all the library vendors this fall in getting materials in. So right now, the amount spent is not as high, but the amount that we have expected to spend yet is putting us well ahead of orders for the year. So I would anticipate spending all of that money this year to make sure we've got a good collection moving forward in all the different areas. Digital collections spent up, but that's no surprise. We front load that. Program services high, but we have some expenses from summer reading for that. We'll do our best to keep that in line.
We always out over, we always spend out program services about some early spring because we use the, we have 20,000 in FOL that we have to put into programs every year.
Yeah, and we've also, for example, if you looked, looked ahead, it looks like we may be already doing some contracting for summer, this upcoming summer. So I think we're we're probably okay there. Payroll services at 59%. And accounting and audit at 48%. That has to do in some, some parts with just making sure that the audit itself, we had extra conversations with our accountants. And just to make sure that we had all those numbers absolutely right. I do incidentally have print copies of the audit. Belinda put them out for you. So you can see the final version of the audit.
Excuse me, Michael?
Yeah.
Back up on two. Why is the Charlotte Hall landscaping so high at this point?
Well, they, they did the work already this year, and it came in at more than we anticipated it would be. That's a one-time expense. There shouldn't be any more there this year.
Their pricing?
No, they just did more work.
Okay. What kind of work?
Well, they clean up the beds. Charlotte Hall has a retention pond. And they have to cut back all around that. They trim trees. I mean, it's pretty much the whole thing, to try to keep it looking good.
And I was thinking that the grass cutting the county does, is that correct? And then we do the kind of pretty stuff? Is that fair?
Yeah, we do the major stuff, as it were.
But not grass cutting. We don't have to worry about that.
Is that? Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
So they did.
Because it's their land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our landscaper did spring cleanup and mulching, create myrtle pruning, the employee patio garden, parking lot trees, the hard surface weeds, hard surface weeds, and dead plants in the parking lot this year. So some of that wasn't originally budgeted out.
Did any of the expenses involved on a regular basis change when the, when the farmers market moved over to the Red Barn?
I think it really didn't much with that area, so it wouldn't have changed our expenses any. I don't know if the county is having to do any extra maintenance there.
Also, Smurla does not contribute to that landscaping, and we're doing the whole area. And also, it hadn't been done the year before. The landscaping company hadn't come in the year before, so there was a lot more to do than usual.
And that amount hasn't changed from last month, when we talked about it previously, but always happy to have questions.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're halfway through the year, we're already at 121%, they're not going to do nothing over the spring, right?
No, that's, that's.
I think it is just landscaping is something that you would think would be pretty predictable.
We do usually have a landscaping spring time. They do usually come in the spring. I don't know what we're going to do because this one was over budget.
Got it.
But then again, if we don't.
It'll be, it'll be fall, but we'll have some in the budget.
I mean, on the other hand, Lexi landscaping is only at 7%. So what's going on there?
I think it was the timing of the bills when we came in, honestly. I mean, because that one says spring on it, so they probably didn't bill us until the fall.
If we all need to get our gardening gloves and knee pads, you know, we want to plant.
The scouts do assist with cleaning up quite often. Landscaping does continue to be an expense that grows every year, it seems like. I know Lexi has a lot of dead plants that need to come out, so it's something that we never seem to get enough money for.
Lenartown doesn't have landscaping expense?
No, the county does pay for that.
So all these beautiful gardens out here.
The county does that here. If you're talking about those beautiful gardens out front, no, that is all volunteer. And I'm going to be having a meeting next month with the people who do the volunteering, who may want some help. We will see.
And our staff actually do some of the planters around the building.
I occasionally do weeding because I can't stand them growing in the cracks out front. So let's see, on to page four. Vehicle maintenance is at 74%, but we did have to do some work on the small van this year. It needed a new battery, and it gets oil changes. So at $500, you know, we're not particularly concerned about that. I don't think that one's going to go over for the year. Membership's up a little bit, but that's no surprise because they're front loaded. You know, you join at the start of the year. Looks like our IT equipment maintenance, we're going to have to be watching, and we have spent out the IT equipment for the year. So basically, those are areas that we're watching. I don't see anything that has me particularly worried at this point. I would like us to take a look at the last page where we have broken out the fund balance for you a little bit more in detail because you were asking questions about that. So you'll see that our operating funds on hand are 252,133. That's our two PNC accounts. The MLGIP account has a funds in it. You'll note that, once again, although that, would that be reflected that the county was late this, this month?
So I mean, it's not in here because it's November.
Yeah, exactly. That, that happened in December, yes.
Yeah, so we Yeah. So we, we went into the end of November with still no funds from this county and not enough to pay the first payroll in December. Um, so I was not able to re-put, put back into the MLG IP account the next state funding. I had to take that out again. So I still owe money to the MLG IP account because the county was, and then the county ended up being an entire week late. So we had to use MLG IP funds to fund that first payroll in December. And then I couldn't pay any bills until we were, until they funded. So the letter we get from the county said they were gonna put the funding in on December first and it came in about December ninth, I think it was, it was like Friday, Saturday. Um, so we had to wait to pay a lot of bills. So, so you'll see on the next EA, EALs in December, you're going to see me putting out a lot of money yesterday, um, to pay all the bills that were, um, sitting. So.
So how late were they? So you expect it every, every other month?
Every other month.
It's a regular, like the first or the tenth or something?
They send a schedule with a letter. This, the letter said December first. Um, and it arrived, that's, that was a Sunday. So give them to the second. It didn't arrive. It didn't show up in our account as pending until Friday, but when it's pending, it still takes twenty four hours. So we couldn't access till Saturday. So Monday of this week was the first time I could access it.
I'm kind of lost here on some numbers. Page six of ten. And the bottom set of figures.
Well, hey, hey, John, are you talking about the fund balance? Okay.
So use of fund balance budgeted a hundred thou. Balance minus a hundred thou. We used it up.
I've not collected any. So if you look at each of the columns, it's budgeted a hundred thousand, zero used. So at this point, we're still negative a hundred thousand on the collect, on the spent or the balance, because we have not used it.
So what we did in terms of that is we said, and this is the budget you approved, it's going to take a hundred thousand dollars to balance this budget, total budget. But so far we haven't had to dip into the allotted fund balance to balance the budget. So if, for example, we go farther beyond our operating funds and we say, all right, now we gotta start drawing on the fund balance, you'll start filling something in there. But right now we haven't, and we haven't for the past several years. This year, you'll recall, we had a balance of about eight thousand dollars. And that meant we didn't dip into the fund balance at all. We were expecting to have to, but we didn't. I'm hopeful that that will happen again this year, that we don't dip into the fund balance for expenses. For that projected a hundred thousand dollars. And that, but that we have practically nothing left. Meaning we've spent just about everything operationally that we want to without going over budget.
John, does that track for you?
It was a little bit better. Yes, thank you.
So the unrestricted fund balance, um, right now in the MLG IP account is four hundred eighty three thousand, six hundred ninety three dollars. And there are a little over, just about sixty one thousand in friends and um, other donations that are earmarked for something else. Um, I should point out that the friends did, uh, when they met this past, um, uh, Monday, give us forty thousand dollars more for the year. So they're up for a hundred thousand dollars for the year, but that will be restricted for the expenses allowed by the friends.
Also, I want to point out that that MLG IP balance is for November thirtieth. So I took funds out in December. So right now it is actually lower that MLG IP, because it's missing that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Can I ask what the, that hundred and fifty eight? So those encumbered funds is that?
That's what I owe back.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
So, um, thus the budget, looking for the most part, pretty good. Couple of areas where we're going to have to watch, keep expenses down. Worry about how are we going to, uh, uh, reallocation of funding? Um, Lexington Park security update. I actually started that last month. You'll recall that, um, we did, um, have the sheriff's deputies use the external cameras at Lexington Park to apprehend, uh, alleged carjackers. Um, and we have a letter from the sheriff supporting an upgrade of those cameras to do things like be able to, um, read license plates. And also to have some motion activated lights. And I told you, we had a, um, we, we had an estimate for forty two thousand dollars to do that work. And John, you asked, is that an RFP? And I said, it's not yet. Um, so I talked to the county commissioners about that. Is there some way we can get that funding? They said, you should talk to um, the state's attorney. They have all kinds of grants. Well, the state's attorney said none of our grants will support that. So we are looking to, um, find grants that might. Um, they did give us some grant sources that AM is looking into to possibly do that. Um. I do have a letter from the sheriff. Um, so I think that if we're not able to identify grants that might help, that possibly that's a request we can make to the county for an emergency basis and through their CIP. CIP is really tight. Um, I don't know if they'll give us any money for that, but, um, the other possibility for you to consider, which I'm not asking you to do right now, is to look at that four hundred eighty thousand dollars we have in the unrestricted fund balance and authorize after an RFP, um, moving forward with that as a security upgrade at Lexington Park. So the, the news is just that the, um, I'm, I'm sorry, the state's attorney is not able to support that for us, um, but we are still looking at it.
The sheriff's department doesn't have any loose.
Um, no, they don't, but, um, I think that's another place that we'll, we'll, we'll ask. Um, but they've already said, you know, their funding is, is all allocated. So.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this, I don't know why any of those costs should come on us. It's not our property.
It is our equipment. Those cameras are ours.
Okay.
So they own the building, but things like the cameras inside, the people counters, all this furniture, the AV equipment, that's all ours. It belongs to the library. So we, if we want this, it is something that we'd be paying for, not the county itself. I'm going to turn it over to Sandy, who needs a microphone to do an outreach division update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, okay. Uh, so good morning. Um, just wanted to give you, uh, an update on how outreach in the mobile library has gone this year. Uh, between January and December of twenty twenty four, uh, the library had three hundred and ninety five outreach events scheduled on the calendar. Um, those included mobile library stops and events, work with the schools, uh, NES Patuxent River, community events, senior centers, daycares, the community, the community correction center, Saint Mary's Adult Medical Daycare, soup kitchens, food pantries and more. So we've been all over the community. Of those three hundred and ninety five events, uh, only nine were canceled. Four were by the site contact due to illnesses or other issues. Uh, three of our mobile library stops were canceled due to weather. One was a tornado warning and the other were excessive heat. Um, and the final two outreach, uh, requests were canceled due to a lack of staff at the beginning of the year. So we have nineteen remaining stops and outreach activities in December, which once complete will leave us at a total of three hundred and eighty six events for the year. Um, between outreach events and mobile library visits, we've interacted with nine thousand, one hundred and eighty two members of the community. Um, very excited about that. Uh, the mobile library team did not do this alone. Uh, I have to say how pleased I am with our admin team and our staff across all of the library locations. Presence in the community matters, uh, and they've spent four hundred and fifty nine hours representing the library at events across the county. Uh, for the mobile library team, we currently have twenty five stops, uh, fourteen of those are public, eleven are private. Uh, we've issued a hundred and three library cards. We've had four thousand sixty one items circulate. Um, and we're excited about the upcoming year. We're hoping to add more stops, more programming. Um, we'd like to add homebound services if possible. One of our newest stops that I'm particularly excited about, I think we mentioned it the last time, is Point of Change, which is a drug and rehabilitation treatment center in Charlotte Hall. Um, and I feel like that's one of the places that we should be. Uh, we're able to issue limited use cards. Um, and a lot of people just don't realize that they can continue to take the card and use it with them once they leave the center, uh, to access our resources. So, um, we've issued, I think, thirty library cards there, uh, this month. And so I really feel like we're reaching a segment of the population that, you know, we haven't, weren't aware of services and resources. Um, so that's kind of an update on where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think we saw something recently that you had actually dropped some stops.
We did, yes.
And you talked to us about them.
Of course. So what we found is that, um, well, at the beginning, when we were scheduling stops for the mobile library, we didn't have a ton of requests yet. So we were reaching out, uh, and trying to decide where we thought there might be a need for us to be in the community. And we found out that some of those weren't really necessary. We were, uh, going to the Northern Center, Senior Center, uh, they were just north of Charlotte Hall. And we, and we saw a small number of people over the several months that we were there. Um, and it just, it, I think it was, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think it was, um, maybe nine people over four months. And so we decided that our resources and time might be better utilized elsewhere. Um, and, and our private stops in general seem to do much better. And by private stops, um, you know, some of the, the senior centers are private. They don't want the community coming in. Um, some of the schools, the high schools are, are private. Um, but so we're, we're constantly assessing and trying to determine where we should be. We have a stop right now, Dollar General and Ridge. Uh, before we had the mobile library, we canvassed, um, the, the different community members that we saw when we were serving at the, uh, the soup kitchen there or the food pantry. And everyone agreed that Dollar General and Ridge was the hotspot. That was the place where we should be. Uh, but unfortunately, I mean, we've changed the time that we're there, trying to reach more people. Um, but you know, we're, that's one of those that feels like it might be on the chopping block, even though I feel like that's the part of a, you know, uh, the county that we should be in because we don't have services down that direction. Um, you know, maybe we need to try a different day. So in our first year, we're, you know, we're learning, we're growing, um, and we're, we're constantly assessing to see how we can do a better job.
And what you talked, which is really significant to come out of that.
No, everyone seemed, uh, you know, really, um, okay with it. We did reach out and say, you know, at this time, um, you know, service, uh, uh, we're, we're going to have to discontinue service, but you know, if, if we see a place in the future, um, you know, we're, we're, we're willing to talk about coming back, you know, if, if there are more people, that kind of thing. So no, no one's been upset that I've, I've heard.
Thank you.
I have two questions and they're both kind of broad, but this is fantastic. And what an amazing start for this resource. So my first question is, can you provide like a general breakdown of like the percentage of time that the mobile library spends open and available to people in transit? Or, you know, parked here and sort of not really, you know, doing its thing. And then I'm also looking back at the budget and seeing how we, the mobile library is way under budget currently based on fuel supplies, maintenance programs. Can you help us? Can you help us like get a picture of like where we are budget wise compared to this amazing work that's going on?
Sure. Um, so, uh, as far as the, the first question percentage, it's, um, it's one of those things. We're still working. We're looking to become more efficient. Right now, most of our stops, uh, we're there for approximately an hour. And we're determining that that's not, that doesn't always make sense. Um, one of the stops that we just had yesterday, um, we only saw people within the first twenty minutes. And so, you know, that, that's one of those places where we might be able to, um, reduce service to a thirty minute stop instead of an hour and then fit in another stop. So, um, you know, we do, uh, when we go out every morning, we have to go out, uh, we usually go out between thirty to forty five minutes ahead of time. We have to do the walk around the vehicle. We have to check the fluids. We have to do the air brake checks. You know, the lights and all of those things. We have to make sure the vehicle is ready to go. So there's a significant investment of time at the beginning of the day, just to make sure that the vehicle is, you know, safe to get onto the road. Um, and then it depends, it depends on where we're going. If it's Charlotte Hall, um, you know, that is more of a a, a ti- you know, significant time to, to get to those stops. And we try to be efficient and, um, you know, in Charlotte Hall, we are visiting Point of Change. We're going to Charlotte Hall Veterans Home. Uh, we were visiting Everyday Play and Learn. Uh, we're visiting a daycare there. And so we try to combine, combine our stops to save gas and, um, uh, but with Charlotte Hall, it is a, a longer stop. So, uh, and the reason it is, is because we, um, do both an indoor service and an outdoor service because some of the veterans don't feel comfortable coming out to the vehicle, even though we do have the wheelchair lift, they're a little uncomfortable using it. So we provide uh, the ability for them to check books outside or check books out in the lobby as well as the outside stop. So we have to get there a little earlier for that. So it really varies between location and day, um, you know, and what we're doing. So, and then, um, regarding, uh, the budget. So maintenance, um, I am the maintenance provider. Uh, some of the other library locations, uh, in the tri-county area, they actually are able to utilize fleet maintenance. We do not. So, um, you know, we have it going in on Monday because U-bolt checks are required every five hundred hours. Uh, I have some work coming up. Um, with the, the generator, the oil and filter, uh, needs to be changed. Uh, we have some shore power cord issues that we're working with. So I think Belinda can say this as well. You know, a lot of this is just, um, we're, we're researching and seeing what others are doing, but it's kind of like our best guess, you know, an educated guess at what we're going to spend. Uh, we are going to be, uh, submitting for roadside assistance. So that will come out of bias in our maintenance budget. Um, because we don't, our insurance currently does not provide roadside assistance or towing. Um, and so in the event of a, a flat tire or, you know, a breakdown, we, we don't have anything like that. I, I've coordinated with two different towing companies that will take care of us, but, um, with this, this new program that's just for bookmobiles, you know, it's one of those, they'll bring us a flat tire and they'll replace the flat tire, you know, so it's, uh, that will, you know, more money will come out. So.
Towards the budgeting. So when, you know, be- when, before we had it, Sandy researched multiple counties and, and we took that budget, the budgets and estimates, estimates, um, and pre-created that budget for the mobile library, but then we didn't have it for an entire year. So of course, last year was under budget. We only had it for less than six months. So this year her budget is down, but we're still guessing as to how much fuel she's going to be using, how much maintenance is going to cost, um, and all of that. So it's still a guess. And so we hope that this year with an entire year, we'll be able to do next year's budget even tighter. Um, and by the time we are actually creating the, the actual final budget for FY twenty six, which is after we get money, we'll have a better idea because we'll be at least nine months in. Um, and I do want to point out that Sandy has read the maintenance manuals on every part of that mobile library herself and researches them and figures out how to fix things on her own. So she's saving money on maintenance because she's literally doing it herself. Both of us have been under that mobile library, looking at things. So, um, we're still learning. It's still, and we may be over, we may be under. We hope we'll be under because we hope we'll be able to adjust next year.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Library, um, section in the budget actually doesn't include the collection for them. That comes out of circulation services. Um, so that budget is split between basically our four branches. And that is actually an area where we're overspent, but you can't see it on this, this budget document. Um, because we had absolutely no idea what we needed for the collection, you know, how much it would need to rotate out during the year, you know, everything involved with bu- budgeting of a, a collection. So, uh, we're having to allocate a little bit more to mo- means it comes from the branches because, you know, that line item doesn't change. So, um, that's an area that you actually don't see, but is, is in here too.
Thank you.
And of course there's staffing for the mobile library as well. Go ahead.
Any new cards were issued this year? And do you have a breakdown on uh, adults and teens? Just a curiosity.
It'll take me just a second to pull it up. I did have it pulled up this morning. Um, sorry, my computer has gone to sleep. Um, so, um, let's see, of the hundred and three library cards, let me. I was looking this morning and I, I don't have the numbers there. They're acting kind of slow, but a large, uh, percentage were for, um, older adults, I think over sixty five, followed by, um, I think it was the forty four year range, somewhere in there in the, in the forties. Um, and we don't issue that many kids, uh, kids cards because a lot of the children already have smart cards, uh, through the partnership between the library and the school system. So the majority of our cards, um, have been for older adults at all the senior centers that we're visiting. And then I mentioned that we've had a, a big burst of new library cards issued for the, the adults that are at Point of Change. So, um, those numbers aren't coming up for me, but that's I think my, my memory of what I was looking at this morning.
Well, I would like to commend Sandy and the entire outreach team. Um, uh, sorry to repeat a, a, a joke from the, uh, staff day, but it was only January second of this year that we took delivery of the mobile library. Um, and the first thing we did was come back across the, um, Chesapeake Bay Bridge, um, in. It wasn't really a hurricane. I only imagined that it was, but it was blowing a good twenty twenty five with lots of white caps. And the first thing that's going to happen is I'm going to crash this mobile library on this bridge and that's going to be the end of my, my career. Uh, but no, we got it here and Sandy and her team have just done a wonderful job. We have never done this before. They've bootstrapped these services. They've created a schedule. They're creating effective outreach. We're reaching people we've never reached before. Um, it's also just a great, um, advertisement for the library. People see it going down the road. They raise their hands and wave. They honk their horns. Uh, we're at the, you know, all kinds of important events like the Veterans Day Parade or, or the County Fair. So I, I think it's really creating visibility and reaching populations that we would never reach just having our physical branches. So Sandy and team, great work.
Thank you, Sandy.
Our next agenda item is the meeting schedule for twenty twenty five. I have given you those dates and locations. Uh, speaking of the outreach, it was supposed to be, uh, Leonard Town in January, but the outreach, uh, divisions from all three counties are meeting in this room then. So we didn't want to bump them. Um, so we will be at Lexington Park. We were kind of staying away from Lexington Park because almost even as we speak, they are putting in the new AV equipment in that, in those meeting rooms, the Longfellow Room and the two meeting rooms. Um, we were meeting as a management team at Charlotte Hall. And so we saw that equipment. It really looking great. It's just a huge, uh, improvement over what was there. So I will be able to start meeting at Charlotte Hall. Um, I don't have us there quite so frequently because it's a bit more of a drive for most of you. But we do like you to get up there, see it and also get to, you know, talk with the staff who are up there. So there is your meeting room schedule for the calendar year of twenty twenty five.
Yeah, it won't be available on, uh, next month.
Okay.
Prior commitment.
Okay. Thanks, John. Thank you, Michael. This is a quick summary of the organizational climate survey. I did share the survey with you some months ago, so you all had a chance to see everything that was said by our employees. Um, I am going through it and I'm about three fifths of the way through. So what I do is I send out a very, very, very long response to a section of it to our entire staff and address concerns that are raised in that. Um, I'd say that primarily the thing I'm hearing is they want more communication from high levels and from their branch managers down. Um, in some cases, um, I think that the communication's there, but what we need to do is try to streamline communication. There's different places to look. So there's teams, there's email, there's, you know, in-person meetings. And so getting the word on these things down to people when they're busy and don't always have time to look everywhere that there might be information is problematic. But I will say that when you have a organizational climate survey and the average of approval, so strongly agree or agree is ninety four percent, you must be doing something right as an organization. Um, so while I am, you know, and the whole management team is looking at that saying, all right, where can we do better? What would make this even better? I think that we have created an organization with very high morale, with people who do feel that their job makes a difference, not only in terms of, you know, what they may get in terms of a salary, but in community service, in making a difference, in reaching people. Um, I, I do think that we are um, looking at a very high morale organization that is deeply committed to the library's purpose and that the organizational climate survey does reflect that. So, um.
Michael, kudos to you and the leadership team on the culture you're setting. Great work.
Well, um, I, I have to give all, all credit to Mary Ann, um, who is more, even more perhaps an internal leader than I am, um, because I do a lot of outside stuff and she works more directly with the branch managers who report to her, the, all the, um, she reports to me and then all the coordinators report to me for the most part. But, um, so I, I think that it is an indication of a very effective team at a, at a high level. Um, and, um, I do think that I, I set a good example for placing value on library services and speaking to their importance. But I think it's really a team effort and we're very happy with the results of this survey.
Mary Ann, you're doing incredible work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, how many of you remember the Time to Care Act? What is the Time to Care Act? Anybody want to give us, here's a quiz for you.
Okay. You haven't heard, you haven't heard of it for about a year and a half.
It has taken a long time to get into this. But the Time to Care Act was passed two years ago and they still don't have all the information in about it. But what it's going to do is create, um, paid time, medical time off for staff. And staff, they know, now it's been two years since we've told them, basically. We haven't given them a lot of details yet because we don't have any details on what they're going to be expected themselves to put into this. But staff are going to have to contribute and it's not going to be an option. And the organization is going to have to contribute to create this source for people being able to have paid time off. We don't yet know how much. But we did receive the first bill for the collaborative. This is from the Maryland Association of, what are they exactly? The Maryland Association of Boards of Education, the Maryland Association of Counties, MECO, and the Maryland Municipal League have all gotten together to say, we're all going to be subject to this. Therefore, let's create this collaborative. So each individual organization does not have to administer this. So instead of when they want to get money into the collective or they have to put money into the collective, our employees are going to have to go to Belinda and say, hey, what's going on here? They're going to have a representative that they're going to be able to talk to. So we have our first bill for three thousand dollars. It's for the whole year to create this collective. And that arrived earlier this week. Um, and so yes, we're going to pay that. All Maryland libraries are doing the same. Some libraries are paying more, small libraries like us are in the three thousand dollar a year range.
So it's the same for staff, basically. Some, somebody's job will be to administer this.
Somebody's job is going to be to administer this statewide and we're paying into that collective. So we don't have to do it ourselves.
Is the rep coming out of, like a union rep? Is the rep going to be in here or at headquarters?
Let me give you just a bit more information. I think we'll answer that question, but the rep is not going to be here in the library. It's not like a union rep or anything.
Okay.
It represents this collective. So what's going to happen, um, the Department of Labor was supposed to release its final regulations November this year, but I don't think they have. I haven't heard. So if they have.
Um, I believe they did, but I haven't reviewed all of them.
Okay. So from November to December, this group, the, those three entities that are creating this collective are going to submit, uh, are going to put out an RFP. Actually, they released the RFP in October. The deadline for carrier to submit an RFP response is the end of this month. Um, the TCA Collaborative Board will identify finalists and communicate the RFP results in January twenty twenty five. The Department of Labor, that's Maryland Department of Labor, will begin accepting employer applications to opt out of the state plan. We are opting out of the plan because we're going to be part of this collective. So we don't ourselves say we're going to be in the state plan as a library. We're going to be in the collective. Um, Department of Labor will confirm opt out to collaborative members by June of twenty twenty five. The Maryland Insurance Administration expected to approve rates issued by private carriers will be by December of twenty twenty five. The Collective Board will finalize a contract with a private carrier to administer all this by February of twenty twenty six. And the benefits effective date is July of twenty twenty six. So we don't have to budget other than say another three thousand dollars for this upcoming fiscal year. But starting in twenty twenty six, we will know ahead of time what the library is going to be expected to be paying for this and we'll have to budget for it. Not in this upcoming fiscal year, but the following fiscal year. Right now, we simply don't know the numbers, what, what we'll have to budget for that. Um, this is what would be called an unfunded mandate. I'm hoping we'll get more money from the state to put into this, but we don't yet know.
Did I miss back at the front of your presentation? Did I miss where libraries voted to do this?
Well, nobody has any choice to do it. Every Maryland employee with more than fifteen employees has to do this. But libraries all opted to join the collaborative.
Oh, there was a library.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, libraries all said, do we want to do this? And to my knowledge, every Maryland library, rather than try to administer themselves, even a big one like Montgomery County is saying, no, we want it in. So all Maryland libraries have joined this collective, this collaborative, yes.
And what do the beneficiaries get? Is it more healthcare?
What they can do is they can, when they want medical leave, they can apply to have money. And it's been, what, two years since we talked about?
Yeah. So the, it's, and if you look it up, it's actually, I think Maryland's now referring to it as the Family Act. Uh, they've changed the name, I think. I'm not, yeah. So it's F A M L I I, but what it is, is it's a version of F, um, FMLA, but it's a paid version. So FMLA protects your job for twelve weeks, but you don't get any money unless you have leave on the books and you can take that leave with your company. Um, this is Maryland. Um, and it's a version of the FMLA that protects your job, but also, um, will pay you a portion of your salary. Um, through the state, not us. So what, what's happening is, um, the employees will have to pay whatever the amount is that we're going to have to contribute and it's by salary. Um, the employee will have to pay fifty percent of it and the employer will have to pay fifty percent of that for each employee. Um, and, and then that goes into a fund. And then when they want to take an, a protected family leave, um, it runs in conjunction with FMLA. So one of the reasons this consortium is so important is because you have to manage both of FMLA and family on top of each other and they have different rules and requirements. Um, they pay out, well, the payments, um, also have to coincide with whether or not you're paying them leave or not, um, what their salary is. And so it's all very like convoluted and also has to be reported to the state at the time they're taking the leave. And then the state has to determine if they're going to pay them. So all of that is happening while you're paying somebody. So, um, that's why this consortium is so important for us and for all Maryland libraries. It's, it's going to be a very convoluted program, especially at the beginning. But what they're getting is leave paid for by the state.
I have two questions, uh, and I do recall us talking about it years ago, but that's ancient history and trustee time. Number one, how are employees feeling about this? And number two, this three thousand that we have to pay, do we expect to reallocate that or is it a fund balance dip or what?
No, the three thousand is going to go to create the, the collaborative, to create the collective. We're never going to get that money back. That's not going to.
How is he paying for it?
Yes, it's. Uh, this year.
This year. Yeah, we're going to pay for it out this year out of our budget.
It's gonna come, it's probably going to come out of contracts at this point, um, which will mean that contracts will go over budget. Um, and we'll, because we had no idea when this was coming.
Right.
Um, or how much it was going to be. So, um, but if we need to, we'll be pulling it from some other line item at the end of the year or dipping into the fund balance that's already allocated there. Um, again, this is like, this is a leave paid for by the state, but it's actually paid for by both the employee and the employer. So the, the, the employee and employer are putting money into a fund balance. And then if you take leave, you get to use that money. But if you never need family leave, you're just paying into a balance.
It's like insurance.
Yep.
So there's three payments that, that, tell me if I'm wrong. We're going to have an annual fee to run the consortium. Right now it's three thousand dollars. But it can, it probably will go up every year.
That is, that is likely.
Then as the employer, we're going to pay some share of the fee, like health insurance.
That is correct.
And then the employee will pay some share.
That is correct.
Again, again, based on salary or something. So, so we won't see any share, but we'll see two fees in our budget every year.
Yes.
Consortium fee and the employer benefit side of it coming out every year.
Right.
For every employee. Every employee is going to be eligible for this.
Every employee.
And, and again,
Every employee.
Something that we had a choice on because we've got more than fifteen employees. That's that we're in, like it or not. So this is just going to be a better way for us to manage it so that Belinda doesn't have to try to track all that stuff related to this particular thing. Now, Michael, to answer your question, how do employees feel about it? They have been told it's going to happen, but we have not been talking about it in great depth because we simply don't know the numbers. I don't think it's fair for our employees to say, guess what? Starting in July of twenty twenty six, some of your pay is going to be going to this whether you like it or not, without being able to tell them, here's what it is. I think it's going to be, I think the cutoff for, um, is sixty thousand dollars. People below that will pay a lower rate than people above that. Um, but without being able to say, it's going to be a dollar a paycheck. It's going to be two dollars a paycheck. I mean, and if you think of millions of people putting into this, we don't think it's going to be a particularly high amount, but until we know exactly what they'd be looking at, we don't really want to talk a lot about it. Because I think that it has the potential to create a lot of dissatisfaction that might not be warranted.
Individual employee opt out?
No.
It's a tax. It's a tax, basically, that Maryland's posing on everybody.
So. So, so we're hoping the consortium is also going to help, like we're going to, I believe, and I'm not clear on this, but I believe we're going to be paying those deductions for both us and the employees to the consortium who will then take care of everything for us. Um, but again, I will say to Michael's point about the employees, when we rolled out that new personnel manual, we have a paragraph in there that says Time to Care Act, which is blank. We, we talked about that when we rolled out that personnel manual. So when we met with every single employee to discuss the new personnel manual with them in those groups, we talked about the fact that this was coming, but that we had no information. And I gave them a brief overview of what it would be. But again, there were no rules or regulations applied to it at the time and there's still not a calculation. My, and I haven't reviewed this in a little while, but it, the percentage was going to be somewhere between point nine to one point two percent of a person's salary. That was the max amount. So you would take your salary and multiply it by one of those numbers and then split that in half.
And that's what would be subtracted each for your, for the year. Um, but each divided out by pay period. Um, so that's the max amount at originally, it was 1.2. I thought they dropped it to 0.9, but I could be wrong on that. When they, because they've changed the rules several times in these iterations.
So we, we simply don't know a lot yet, but we will keep you absolutely informed of what we do find out. Um, as I say, this, this bill just suddenly appears. Oh, okay. Well, that is only $3,000. Um, so we will, we will keep you informed. I believe that this law is very well intentioned. That there are people who do not have paid medical leave in Maryland and that they're trying to close that gap. Um, it will, I, I, it will be putting some burden on us as an organization. Um, but we'll, we'll do our best to meet that burden when it comes.
All right.
Also, this week, an update on the Everside Clinic. Um, so we found out a couple of things specific about money. Um, we did get a rebate on the health costs of $25,797, 25797. So. We too pay into the county an estimated amount. And at the end of the fiscal year, which was, you know, June 30th this year, the, the county ultimately, and it's only just happened, got back an exact sense of what um, the overage payment was. They refund a small portion of that back to us because we're a small portion of the number of employees out there between the schools, the county and Metcom. Um, so we got back $25,797. That has to be used to something related to health benefits. It's not just whoopee. So. Our share of the Everside Clinic, and it's not going to be completely known to the end of the year, but based on the first three months is expected to be $16,785. That's 1-6-7-8-5. So, um, that rebate, um, we've heard from the county can be applied to the Everside expense. And that is the best place to put it because it all relates to the employees putting in a 15%, the library paying 85%, them using the clinic. So we have asked that they, yes, they will hang on to that money. That leaves $9,012. That can also be applied to that Everside cost next year. So for now, we're just saying, we know we're going to owe the money. That's how we're going to use it. But you asked me to find out, and I've tried to do so, how many library employees are using the health clinic? And the answer is, they don't know. And here's why. People go there. They present their county insurance card, but they don't say, I work for the library. I work for the schools. So they're not tallying that at the clinic. Um, so we do have a three-year contract to stay in there. Uh, David Yingling, the Deputy County Executive, is happy to come talk to you about what's going on with the clinic, how many people are using it, um, satisfaction with it. We know we do have employees using it. But we don't know how many. Um, and I frankly would be very concerned about putting out a staff survey saying, are you using this? Um, that might not be specifically a HIPAA violation, but I'm concerned about asking people where they get their healthcare. So I don't know that I'm going to be able to tell you, yep, we have, you know, 4,000 visits this year or whatever. Um, but I do know that we are using it. We've got a three-year contract. If you want more, as I say, I'll happily have David come back and present to you about this.
And yeah, and a total of feedback from employees.
It's that, the ones that have used it have, have been very, very happy with it. Lauren's one, so I'm sure she'll talk to it.
Thanks, Belinda.
It's actually my husband. He's on the library health insurance with me and he's gone several times and been really happy. Um, they're able to do everything right there. Like he can get his blood work there. He can, um, review it with the doctor. He's had, um, a really good experience overall with how quickly he got in. And then also just because he didn't have a primary care physician before this. And so it was just so easy to get in with the doctor. So we were really happy to have it.
They do vaccinations quickly and well, I can attest, so.
I, I do think that when it's time to consider the end of the three-year contract, and if we want to re-up, we will need to think about how do we thoughtfully get a sense of.
Yeah.
You know, actual usage and data is, I appreciate the privacy concerns. Is there a way to ask for any kind of anonymous, like, how much usage is a library getting out as we consider whether to re-up after the three-year period? But I'm glad to hear it's going so well.
Well, um, the ultimate reason for this, and, and again, uh, David will come and explain to you in person if you like, is we think that it's going to help keep overall healthcare costs down. Um, and the more use of it, the more likely it is to do that. But, um, so. This is from, this is from David. The real issue long-term is that the Everside Health Center is a way to address escalating insurance rates. Having part of our insurer not participating would compromise that strategy. I asked, could we get out if we needed to? We would discuss it in the future, but I don't think anybody can opt out until July of 2028. So that's, the, the county who, you know, is basically the one who provides this would really like us in there. Um, and.
I, I mean, we'll see after three years. We're, we're not going to commit to an everlasting.
Better. Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I think at the end of three years, you, you will review this.
Remember that. I thought we had a one-year option. I thought that was, was the deal, but.
It was always three.
This is almost 70% over what we budgeted for it.
I think it was three.
Um, so yeah, it's really. And with S, and I see how the 26 budget health insurance is going through the roof already. So I don't, and, and I, and I argued at the time, there's no way to measure any savings with this plan. It's theoretical that people go to this clinic and not go to their expensive Blue Cross. So it's, it's hard to say, you, you can't, you literally can't prove any savings. Uh, it might be a nice to have, it might be convenient and it might be a good benefit for employees. But if we don't have any say over the costs and we can't prove benefits or even, or even prove usage, it's, um, I'm, I'm, I don't think I voted for, I don't think, I don't think I'm comfortable with this, but, but if we're in for three years, I thought it was a one-year thing. But if we're in for three, we're in for three.
Um, just to clarify, the 26 budget of health insurance, we have no idea what that's going to look like. I just do a flat 5% increase. And now some of that increase includes the fact that we had two, we've had a couple of babies that made some employees go up from one plan to another plan. Um, and also we've had a couple of employees who joined the plan that hadn't been on the plan because of a life expectancy, life issue. So all of those are factored in there, but it's just a blatant 5% increase that won't necessarily be the increase once we figure out.
On health insurance.
Yeah.
Six?
Yes.
It's a 20% increase.
Well, it's, again.
More than 20% increase. And I understand, I understand that you, you're throwing the a target at the wall here, but that just shows the constantly growing cost of health insurance. That's, that's really painful in this country. And we're kind of adding on to our own expenses here.
Well, we're always going to.
And we have to, have to be able to measure. And I can imagine two years, what the 17,000 is now 25,000 and, and I'm concerned if we don't say now, we need, we need some measurable data in two years to look at. And if they're not able to collect that data, how are we, how are we ever going to measure this?
We'll have to collect the data somehow, right? I mean, these are very.
It's going to really.
Well, I don't, I don't think an anonymous survey.
Did you use it?
I don't know.
Yes.
Have you been to this clinic?
Yes.
An HIPAA violation?
I don't know.
Well, we, I mean, we have time to figure it out. But I do, when I look at these two budgets, right, Lexi Health Insurance is 106 and FY25, and we're looking at 153.
Again, it's 5% over the cost, the, the current price.
Okay.
But then again, I've added people in who were not added last year's budget. Because there are people who have added to the insurance. So that's the extra amount.
I'm not saying there's not logical reason for it, but it's just escalating. It's probably our biggest growth factor is health insurance as a percentage of the budget.
Please will be. It's health insurance.
Unfortunately.
And now you see why I complain that the actuaries all think it's four and a half percent.
We'll tell, tell you what, let's, let's wrap up this Everside conversation and then we'll.
I'm just letting you know, that's, we, we got the rebate. It's going to go to pay for Everside. That's not money out of pocket. So, um, basically it, as a insurance comeback, should be going something that is an insurance offset.
Yeah.
And it will. So.
So, Michael, what, the way I heard you describe it, we got 25.7 back as a rebate.
Uh, I.
Yes.
Yes, 25.797.
Right. Then 16.7 is going out as Everside expense.
Yes.
Did I hear you say that is for covering three months?
No, no, that's covering, that will cover the full year of what we think the expenses are going to be based on a three-month estimate. Now, they could be lower, they could be higher. We won't know until the end of the fiscal year exactly what those are.
I, I misheard. I thought three months was.
No, that's not three months. No, 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 no.
And is that labeled as health clinic admin fees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Again, that's the admin fees, the health clinic admin fees is what we allocated. We're not going to use it because we're going to use the health refund. We're not even going to get the health refund back. The county's keeping it and putting it towards FY25 and FY26 health clinic fees.
That makes sense. Just trying to see how the puzzle pieces.
Yeah, it is. It is something to keep track of.
Yes, yes.
Um. That's the end of the informational. Uh, would you like to take a break?
Yes, uh, let's entertain a motion for a five-minute break.
So moved.
Thank you, John. John Walters, you want to second that?
I think, all right.
Okay. Second, will you second that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any poser of saying nope. Motion carries. See you in five minutes at 10:59.
There's no audio online.
There should be.
Ah, now you're unmuted. Thank you.
Sharon, how you doing over there? You good?
I'm doing great. Thanks. I just had work conflicts that I couldn't make it in person.
Understandable. Thank you for being here. Happy holidays to you, Sharon.
Thank you very much.
All right, folks, uh, I think we can resume the meeting. Welcome back, everybody. And we can move on to the action items. Michael, take it away.
Yes, um, I've shared with you recently, um, news related to library intellectual freedom, the library in Virginia where the elected officials basically just said, goodbye, library board. You're not doing what we want. Um, there are those in this county who complain about library boards being self-appointed. There's a darn good reason why Maryland has that. Thank you. Um, and I hope to never see that change. Um, but, um, New Jersey has joined other states in passing a Freedom to Read Act, uh, as of just Monday. Um, so other states are getting on, uh, are, are joining us, um, in Maryland, so Illinois, California, Maryland, New Jersey, uh, I believe Vermont now are all passing Freedom to Read Acts. And I've received information from our state librarian about some of the things that our policies should include under the Freedom to Read Act. So the first one is material selection policy. The additions are in red. The other parts you have already, um, passed that sort of one through six there, you had already done that. So I did add a reference to the Freedom to Read Act so that people can, if they wish. so that people can, if they wish, uh, see in Maryland code where that is. So in accordance with these standards, the library affirms the following, we need to have this as part of our policy. Um, that all Marylanders have their freedom to read and the library will support that freedom with its collection. That the library is responsible for providing adequate resources to satisfy the diverse needs of its users. We need to affirm that. Librarians and library staff will, and I quoted here, curate collections that provide access to the widest possible array of books and the materials that support funding. And I gave the Comar reference, then I added within the limits of our resources. Uh, I thought that was prudent to do. Um, and the library board trustees may not dismiss, suspend, discipline, demote, reassign, transfer, or other retaliate against an employee for performing their job duties consistent with the library's written policy adopted under this regulation. And that's direct quote from Maryland code. So you're the protectors of library employees. If somebody comes along and, and this has happened in this county in twenty eighteen, I don't like what that person said, get rid of them. And that person had simply written a positive review of a particular book. We as the library board, uh, you as a library board cannot dismiss that employee. Um, the other addition, um.
Can I ask a question, Michael, about this section? So, uh, numbers three and four have that direct cite to the Comar sections. Numbers one and two, are those also direct citations to the law? So where do they come from?
Those came from the, um, the Maryland State Librarian. These are the standards that are there. Uh, I did not feel the need to, but those are not necessarily direct quotes, no.
Okay, thank you.
Those came from her. Um, on the next page, I took out a sentence because we actually say that somewhere else in a place that's more appropriate, lower. I don't think we need to say twice that it's a responsibility for the use of materials, rest with their parents, illegal guardians, saying it once is adequate. The other addition is at the very end. We had added, the library will not accept more than three requests from an individual. I, I struck accept and put in review. I mean, someone can slap a request for a thousand titles on us. And it's okay, I mean, we're going to say, nope, we're not going to take that. We, we will, we will take it, but we're not going to review more than three requests in a one month period. Um, and if somebody submits more, um, only the first three will be reviewed and everything else will be discarded. We're not hanging on to a list for you. Uh, material under review, and this is part of, um, of the Freedom to Read Act will remain available for use by the public and the library staff until the review process has concluded. Somebody complains about something, we're not taking it out right then and there. It's still available until it is reviewed.
Let's see, free limit, uh, uh, to prevent, partly to prevent eating, uh, up a lot of staff time and, and processing the requests.
That's the primary reason for it, yes. You know, if somebody, and you see the last sentence there, review materials can lead to one, one, one month of the preceded materials reconsideration. We're required to give a review in a reasonable time. I think one month's a reasonable time considering the staff, you know, the, the process that sort of takes place here. Um, but yes, if somebody is going to, you know, here's five hundred books, and this has happened. You know, people look at the Moms for Liberty site, say, here's the books they don't like. They go to a local library and say, I don't want those books. So suddenly, you know, we're, we're looking, and then there's a Florida lib, uh, school library that's banned over a thousand titles. Suddenly, we're looking at having to see, do we even have the thousand title, those thousand titles, and then review them in a reasonable amount of time.
I think I've read that most of the proposals to remove books come from a shockingly tiny number of individuals.
They do.
Yeah.
And it's been a while since we've received one. We got three earlier this year. Uh, yeah. Um, but, so those are the sort of additions I'd like you to approve to the library policy with the Freedom to Read Act in mind.
Yep, back on page one, that number three.
Mm-hmm.
Where you added within the limits of our resources. I agree, I understand what you're saying. The law doesn't provide for any limit, any recognizing the library's financial limits. There's no language in the law.
I, I didn't, I, I didn't see any, so I added that. I, I think it's just, you know, a statement that, um, that's understood in the law. It's not like we've got unlimited resources.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, in terms of somebody objecting to a program or an event.
That's a separate policy. Okay, and we'll look at that in a minute.
All right, so I think we can entertain a motion to approve these revisions to the materials selection policy.
Uh, this is Sharon. I actually, I'm reviewing it online and there were a couple of typos that I caught. So I've just added those into the document, but my major question was at the end, the part about remaining available for use until the review process has concluded. If we could add, uh, Michael, you said that that came from the Comar, um, from the Freedom to Read Act, and if we could add that Comar citation, I think that would be valuable.
So in the second to last sentence of that policy?
Yes, exactly. Just so that.
I, I can go back and find that and add that. Um, I'm pretty sure it's in there, um, if it is. But I know that that's considered to be standard and best practice. It's not just to pull it, but I will find that and I will have to bring this back.
Well, perhaps we can approve it with that, with a placeholder, all right, to add the appropriate Comar language. Um, Sharon, can you walk us through the typos you found?
Sure, yeah. So I, and again, I notated the document online, so it would be easy to find, but in point four on page one, it said, um, the library board of trustees may not dismiss, dis, dis, blah, 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 right? Against an employee for performing their job duties consistent with the library's written policy adopted under of this regulation. And I think the of should not be there. I think the of should be struck.
Sounds good.
And then the other one that I found.
That's funny because I took it right out of the.
I believe it. And the other was in the very last paragraph. It says, if more than three titles are submitted for review, be one person in one month. And I think that should be by one.
Yes, thank you.
Honestly, it's very easy for me to catch these because Google Docs says, hey, this is, it flags the grammar.
Okay, so.
And my Chris software did not.
So I think we can entertain, we can entertain a motion to approve this updated material selection policy uh, with the correction of the two typos that Sharon identified and with the placeholder addition of the Comar citation in the second to last sentence in the document.
Who do approve as amended?
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Etlack. Discussion. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, motion passes.
The next one is programming. Uh, so John, you, you've anticipated me. Um, so we do have a programming, uh, policy as well, and that is a service, so it too has to reflect the Freedom to Read Act. Now, it doesn't have to have the information in and about the collections. Uh, obviously, a program's not a collection, but there are some things that I think um, worthy of adding to it with the Freedom to Read Act in mind. And it's not nearly as much as the materials because it doesn't, the Freedom to Read Act doesn't address programming in such detail, but it does say we are a service. So, um, the information added is in red, um, and the representative elements, and we need to take that, uh, un, of this regulation out again. Um, but, um, those are the sections from the Freedom to Read Act that I think that apply there. Um, uh, once again, I've taken out a section because we say that elsewhere. Um, and the final addition is at the end. All requests for reconsideration must be made with a program and events reconsideration form. We do have that form. The library will not accept program reconsider, uh, request from, uh, non-county residents are the additions there. So not nearly as much added here, but those are, um, with either the Freedom to Read Act in mind. Um, the one that's kind of not there, um, is the library will not accept program reconsideration request from non-county resident. That's not part of the Freedom to Read Act. I simply think that it's good policy for us, so we don't have people coming in from outside saying they don't like something.
So I, I have one silly question.
Yeah.
Um, number one on page one, is there a reason it's in all caps? I don't know if it's, I noticed, I don't know if it's because it's a Comar because on the material selection policy, we also do all caps. I don't know if those are because they're Comar citations, but it's.
That, that's the language of the Freedom to Read Act.
So they're just in all caps?
Yeah, it's, it is in all caps.
I thought it was a silly question.
Yeah, no, it's not a silly question. I frankly don't like it, but if you look at all the legislation, it's all written in all caps.
Yeah, kind of screaming at us.
Yeah. Uh, oh, well, I guess it's law.
It's a typical.
Legislation?
For one, yeah, legislation when there's like amendments to with the code.
I didn't notice it over here, but I noticed it here. It was helping out.
Uh, so those are the things I'd, I'd like you to consider adding to the policy.
So we can, uh, entertain a motion to approve this updated programming policy with the correction of that typo under number two, getting rid of the word of.
I assume, so I moved.
Thank you, Tressa.
Second.
Thank you, John. Discussion.
Yes, um, I see that one person, I mean, just because somebody speaks up and says, I don't like this program, that's no reason to cancel it. But is there a window after which this program is going to launch, so they don't walk in here the day of and demand a review?
Well, uh, if they did, the program would go on anyway. Um, we would not be canceling a program because somebody demands a review right then and there. Um, basically, uh, I think that this policy does protect us from people saying, I don't like this program, therefore you can't do it. And that's the aim of it.
So I guess on the reconsideration form, is there any like timeliness element on the form itself?
I'd have to look at the form. Can somebody bring that up?
I don't think there is.
Okay.
I know we've got one.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Sharon, did I cut you off?
Oh, I was just going to say, I think it could be valuable to have that time limit because there clearly you're not going to cancel something that somebody's walking in the day before and objecting to, but there may be some valid reason that comes up for canceling an event. Maybe the speaker has, I don't know, some kind of horrific background that we don't find out. I'm, I mean, like, you guys do fantastic work, and I'm not saying that would ever happen, but if it did, you would want some window by which you would cancel it so that you wouldn't have people show up and be upset.
I, I do think this, this question might, you know, be better reserved for, y'all can take a look at the form and think about it and add, change the form as you see fit, but I'm not sure we, it's totally germane to this question today. Yeah, it's a procedure, so you all can address it if you see fit.
All right, well, we, we will take a look at that. I'll, I'll take another look at that form, uh, maybe send me a link to it and just see what we might want to add there. Um, the one thing I would consider adding to this would be something along the lines of, um, but I don't want to do it now. I'll, I'll think about it for some other time, if I could get this approved for now.
Yeah. Any other discussion on the motion on the table to approve these revisions? All right, uh, all those in favor of the, of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, motion passes again.
Right. In your packet, you have a draft for approval for the budget request for fiscal year twenty six. Um, as a summary, um, the request is for six hundred forty eight thousand, six hundred thirty four dollars. But we have a deduction of the fiscal year twenty five budget of two hundred seven thousand dollars. So the increase over the fiscal year twenty five budget would be four hundred forty one thousand, six hundred thirty four dollars. And on page one, you'll see that the personnel services are going to go up three hundred eighty eight thousand, nine hundred ninety seven dollars. That is a two percent COLA, a two point five percent step, a position for Lexington Park, and a salary adjustment for our coordinators. So you'll recall what happened is in order to keep some people non-exempt, we increased their salary level, and that's created compression between that level and the coordinator level. Um, coordinators are people like Laura, um, people like Robert in IT, uh, people like Sarah, who's digital services. They do a lot of work for the library. And for the past two years, they have voluntarily taken back steps rather than get increases that would have been due to them in order to try to have the money that was coming in go more towards raising lower salaries. So this would be a raise for coordinators basically taking that salary, part of the salary scale up. Um, so that's all included in that. Um, you see that we are raising what we think health insurance cost will be by a hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred dollars, but again, we don't know that's the case.
And, uh, Michael, to be clear, when we talk about how much you're raising it by, we have to figure out that number by comparing the new budget to the old budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I've done that for you.
Okay, I, I, are those numbers written anywhere?
Um, they are not on the sheet, no. Um, but I have, I have gone through them. Um, that health clinic admin fee for next year, for example, that's pretty much taken care of. At least that ten thousand worth is pretty much taken care of. We'll see what the additional amount might be, so it could be, we'll have to spend some of that, but we'll have at least nine thousand, you know, going that, that way already. We'll hope we'll get another rebate. Um, over on page two, we have raised Lexington Park's electric, and we've raised Leonard Towns Electric to reflect what we think it will be based on what we're seeing so far this year. The increase in that line is forty three thousand, six hundred ninety throughout all utilities. The staff development budget has gone up three thousand, three hundred forty seven dollars, and all those other lines remain exactly the same. So that's the increase for operating supplies. The other kind of big increase is on page three, it is circulation. We've asked for the circulation collection, that's our books and our movies to go up ten thousand. I've asked for digital go up fifty thousand to a hundred and ten. Um, it does look like regionally hoopla will go away at the end of this fiscal year. We're talking to the other counties. Um, so what I want to be able to do is put more money into Libby um, and possibly add a service, um, called Freegal, which is music. a service, um, called Freegal, which is music, and a service called Canopy, which is movies, but they are not on the paper use model the way that hoopla is. So we think we can provide more content for less money. Um, and there will be some waiting for titles, unlike with hoopla. I will say that the hoopla costs, as we we reviewed the, um, budget hoopla costs are down because we've cut down the highest sort of cost per use. But looking at it regionally, it looks like it's still going to keep growing. And I think we finally just reached the, um, so that decision hasn't been made yet, but basically we're putting Smurla money and Friends money against hoopla, and I'd like to use it for something else if we can find some way to contain those digital costs and still provide a lot of materials. So that's why that is higher.
Do you have a timeline for resolving that?
We don't yet because we're still talking with the other two counties. Um, we have a sense that one county is committed at the end of the fiscal year, but I don't have the final word. And we're still having that discussion regionally. If necessary, we will go out on our own and just say Saint Mary's not going to offer it. Um, but I I I think that that's going to be, um, where we end up with hoopla for Saint Mary's, no matter what. We can try to coordinate it regionally so that it doesn't look like it's just us, but that's, I think that's where we're going to end up going. Um, I I'm sorry about that. It's an incredibly popular service. Because titles are almost always available, but I I just think within the limits of our budget, it's not something we can do. And we'll try to, you know, even if we get an increase, we're going to try to put it where it's more cost effective. Um, there's no change in virtual services, no change in mobile library expenses for now, although we've talked about how we may be able to reduce those once we know more of this year, what that will be. Um, the uh, professional services have, we payroll services, we've taken down ten thousand, so that's seven thousand less than now. Um, over on page four.
I'm sorry, Michael, the professional services, the contracts, would that include the three K for TTCA?
That does not include it yet, and we only just got that figure, so, um, I hope that we can still get that into contracts as it is, but maybe not. But the payroll services, uh, starting Monday, we're going with Paylosseby, our new payroll vendor. That is going to be saving us plenty of money.
That's great news.
So, um, over on page four, we're taking insurance up by four thousand dollars, and that's the one change there. So that sort of budget group is four thousand up. Under equipment, it's two hundred thousand dollars less because we got one-time funding for um, the AV equipment in Charlotte Hall in Lexington Park, and we won't have that money next year. So we're reducing that budget line by that amount of money. So in terms of expenses, kind of the one, uh, we we've raised some based on what we think is going to happen, but kind of the one thing that is substantially different is that we are taking the fines account, which we're probably going to have to rename down, um, um, so that it would allow us to take out that, call it fifteen thousand dollars that we're collecting in fines so far this year. And we would not have that, and we would have a period next July where we did an amnesty and ask people who owed fines to come back to the library. Um, basically, if a fine's ten years old, that person probably not even in the county anymore, but it's sort of like, we're just going to wipe those because we know we're never going to see them. We're going to try to get more people back to the library. So it will be a celebration of sorts. So that's kind of what we're asking for. Again, it is a large ask. I emailed you about what we heard in the initial budget session that's talking about next fiscal year. It's looking pretty um, tight. But those were not final figures and often they find some way to find more money. You'll recall that we did get a revi- a visit from the county commissioner who did talk about how the library was systematically defunded for a number of years. And they've promised to try to make it up to it. So while this is a large request, I think that A, it's what we really need to continue great service with high morale. I think that more materials are necessary, especially more digital. So I I don't think that this is an outlandish request. I request that you approve the request at this amount. You will see the actual budget preparation at your next meeting. It's due to the county the exact same day, but it is about forty five pages long and it sets out all the same great detail where the increases are, where, why they're for. There's form after form after form we fill out. But this would be the budget request that we'll make when we find out what we're actually going to get, which will be March and we'll have until early April to probably appeal it if we want to. Then we'll go back and give you the real budget for next year when we know what we're actually getting.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Michael, the line for fines, as you were mentioning, because, um, with the amount for twenty six being ten thousand, is that because we're we're doing away, the proposal is to do away with fines and just have that amount, um, expected for, um, like lost material?
We'd still be getting in money for damaged materials, damage and lost materials.
All right.
And that's what that money we'd expect to be. It does take out, what we think we're getting in fines right now is about fifteen thousand dollars. And we already cannot do fines for anybody under the age of eighteen. So a lot of the fines that we used to collect, we no longer do. That in return to digital means that a lot, which doesn't have fines, a a lot of that money just isn't coming in anymore.
All right, so we can entertain a motion to approve this draft budget proposal for FY twenty twenty six.
So moved.
Thank you, Tressa.
Second.
Thank you, Dorothy. Let's discuss.
So I'm looking at the total government funding line, five, seven, seven, three. So that's basically the county money. That's what we're asking the county to finance. So that's.
No, the county, that's a, the county only pays about seventy five percent.
Oh, the state, that's true. The state's in there also. We're asking county four eight, so. Um, I'm just eyeballing this. That's like a ten percent increase of what we're asking the county to give us in last year. Um,
Well.
I don't know, I don't know how that would go over. I don't, I want to be cognizant of the county situation and the economic situation we're facing.
Well, my.
Percent increase, I think is a reach.
Oh, I I I agree with you, but my direction for the county is ask for what you think you need. And I think we need this. Now, do I think that we're going to get that? No. But I also think that they should see what they, what we we think we need. And they don't have to give it to us, but, um, I I do think that we're in a somewhat strong position, um, because of that promise to try to make good some years where we were not funded. Now, what happens when we don't get all this money? Then we we present you the realistic budget that we know based on what we have. But I I think it's good to ask. If we don't ask, I don't think there's anything, you know, i- if we don't indicate need, then I don't think they're going to say, oh, the library is doing fine. I mean, I I emailed you the results of a recent survey that put the library as the most valued service in the county. I mean, I think that we are we're doing well. I'd like to see us continue to thrive, and that's the money that it's going to take.
And the increase is, uh, almost entirely, um, th- that keep people even in their salaries plus, uh, health insurance?
The increase is for collection as well.
Okay.
So, and so when do we get a, when do we get a closer number on the health insurance, which is such a huge increase? That's a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollar increase right there. So when will we be closer on that?
May.
May.
May is when I get the open enrollment information, which is when they set the the new cost rates. And then I put out open enrollment and I know who in our employees are going to keep, add or decline insurance. So until May, I don't know anything.
And unfortunately, that's after the budget cycle for the most part, but we'll present to you the final budget for approval in June as always.
Yeah, it's after we we get our money, but it's before I present a total final budget to you.
Why is the increase so big?
I always add five percent because we have no idea what insurance will be.
It's not five percent.
Well, the other thing for additional, additional people, so we had people.
Five percent plus the actual, five percent of the actual cost, not what, five percent of what was allocated last year.
But there's also added people. There's also people.
So we've got more people. We've had two library babies recently, and those people go to family, uh, coverage.
Actually, we're at three.
Three.
Yes, it's today. Wow, congratulations. Whoever.
The way I calculate the health insurance each year is I literally have a list of every employee who has insurance, what they're, what type they're taking. Um, so whether it's single employee plus child employee plus spouse or family, um, and that's the calculation for the budget itself, for the actual budget. So, um, this one, we added people to the, to the health insurance in the middle of the year. We've added babies to the health insurance in the middle of the year. Um, so this time I took all the people, everybody that I have in there right now, which is a, is an addition to the people that were in there when we started this budget, calculated out what they are in, how much they're charged now, and it's five percent on top of all of that. So it's not five percent on top of what we budgeted for. It's five percent on top of what I see in there right now.
So it's like.
Plus, plus any, any possibility of a new person moving to a full-time position.
Linda, you gotta stop hiring all these babies. Come on.
I know.
Times are tough.
Lots of babies.
Well, ju- just when somebody goes from a single coverage to a family coverage, it, the cost for the library can raise from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars.
Sure.
Um, it it goes up substantially, depending on, you know, what type of coverage they select, but this is like, this is a big expense.
Yeah. So I I think with this budget and the motion we're talking about, to me, like now is an appropriate time to really be crystal clear about what our needs are, what ideally we'd like to see. And the fact that Michael is in communication with the commissioners, there's other context. We're not just dropping this budget off without any kind of conversation or background. I don't think, because of that, I don't think this would be received poorly the way it would if this came in cold. Um, I think because of the communications and groundwork Michael has laid, I think now is a good time for us to be honest and upfront. And then let's see what happens and then we can deal with that there.
Agreed.
Also, just a reminder, we we submit a formal presentation with, and each line item that does increase, we have to put that on separate sheets. And so like last year, they literally just like went through and eliminated those sheets and we got the one. So it's, it's not. Uh, we should ask for what we need. We won't, we do not expect to get all of it. We readjust the budget once we know what we have.
Yeah.
So fingers crossed for as much as we can get.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Because I see the wheels turning above people's heads. All right, Judith, anything else?
Now, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces here, but I don't think we know enough now to, to do anything but ask.
Okay.
I mean, the state of Maryland is in an incredibly poor position right now, too. And what happens if we don't get the million dollars from Maryland? That's, that's, but I know you can't answer that until, so when do we know what Maryland gives us?
Well, we don't know until, um, June, when the governor's budget is finally approved. But right now, um, while the governor's going to be presenting his budget very soon, um, the increase for Maryland libraries is in co-mor. So he could, they could launch an official process where they revoke that, but I don't think they're going to. I think now remember that that's dependent upon fifteen factors with population being probably the most important. Saint Mary's has grown a little. And there's supposed to be an increase, I'm hoping for another twenty thousand from the state, but I don't think it's going to be much more than that.
Hmm. All right, so, uh, let us vote on the motion on the table. There's no further discussion. Um, all those in favor of approving this draft budget proposal, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Abstain. I don't actually have a copy online, so I wasn't able to review, except for what you were saying.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. So the motion passes with one abstention.
So I I now turn the meeting over to you trustees and plan to stay silent, uh, as much as I can, which you you know is difficult for me. Um, for you to talk about the retirees' health benefit trust.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Um, all right, so we had, we met in closed session last month and had some conversations about that. We did take one vote in closed session last time. And I spoke with our county attorney earlier this week. And although she is not the official counsel for the library, she gave some some good kind of insights and perspective that I appreciated. And I I do think out of an abundance of caution that we should revote in open session on the motion that we made um, previously in closed session and continue the conversation from there. So, um, the motion that we talked about was to close the asset strategy fund and move the OPEB balance to an investment firm to be determined at today's meeting. Um, that is the motion that we looked at. So can we entertain a motion to approve that? We're still at a quorum.
Um, I, I move that motion.
Okay.
So move.
Thank you, Judith.
I will second it.
Thank you, John. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes and Tressa did step out for that. All right, so then I guess the next phase in our conversation is talking in a little more detail about the alternative options and sort of the directions we would want to move in away from asset strategy. Does anybody want to pick up the conversation from there?
I I think we need to, since we're in open session, we need to discuss very lightly. Why are we contemplating this move?
Hmm.
They've been with us a long time or vice versa. Why are we intending to do this? My observation is there are places where historically it seems like we can get better return. Excuse me, returns. And we can do it without the advisory fees that we're being charged now.
Thank you, John. Any other thoughts? Well, with that in mind, then can we talk about some possible alternatives?
Fortunately, I didn't bring the same page I emailed everybody I asked them to bring with the four funds on it. Oh, Dorothy has it. Okay, I'm sure. Does everybody have this? Funds? Yeah, whatever. It followed my instructions.
Judith, can you kind of talk us through a little bit?
Um, it's really John's document, but okay, so through a lot of research, um, it's been narrowed down to four funds, American funds. Are these the four John? American, Massachusetts.
Massachusetts for short.
No, okay. The American balance. No, okay. The American Balance Fund, MFS, T. Rowe Price, and the Vanguard Wellington. And this came to us through conversation with Patrick Wing from Marquette. Who does a lot of the county's OPEB Sheriff's Office. The others and he as a consultant and and financial manager. So we looked um into these and you can and we gave everybody the links. You could see that they're well-established funds, kind of, you know, blue ribbon funds that have been around a long, long time. Um, and they give good market returns. There's the the issue is here, there's no middleman. There's no middleman. We're not paying the extra ten thousand dollars a month. We'll have access to the account at our fingertips. We can go in and and monitor it every day if you want to. So I think that's it. The big picture is looking at um something that's more manageable and more cost effective for us. And we'll hopefully continue to give us better returns than we've been getting and better than market returns also. That's that's the point is you don't want to meet the market. You want to beat the market. Otherwise, why are we doing this?
So there was a small misspoke there. We're not paying ten thousand a month.
Right, there are fees. Yeah, I mean, obviously, and I think they're on here. There are fees embedded, obviously, in any gains. There are fees. Yet, I mean, these guys make money just like just like everybody else, but there's not an additional fee of. I'm not sure what that fee was for.
So let's go back to the four that I went in in Morningstar. These are called moderate allocation. And they all center around approximately a sixty forty mix stocks versus fixed income. That's the same mix that we have in our IPS with um asset strategies. Now, it varies a little bit depending on how the market's doing. Or the advisor says, you know, international is going to be good for the next three years. Let's push that up by a couple of points, but essentially. We're talking about a roughly sixty forty mix. In that category at Morningstar, I think the number of funds that were covered was something like seventy seven. I did not look at all seventy seven. I'm very familiar with American funds. Fairly familiar with MFS. T. Rowe is out of Baltimore. I picked them because they were local. And then Vanguard, based on the recommendation of Patrick Wing. Which he described as being very good at very low cost. So then when you look down in those families, you see in step two, well, what do they call their moderate allocation fund? Three of them call it balanced and one of them calls it the Vanguard Wellington Fund. Which is in essence, a quote balanced fund. Then I looked at what Morningstar thinks of them in terms of the market, uh Morningstar rating. Goes from one up to five. Three of them were four. One of them was currently a three. They're all moderate allocation. And you can see in step four. How are they doing in terms of the stock bond uh ratio? So some are a little bit higher on stocks. Some are a little bit lower, but they're all hovering around that kind of sixty five thirty five or sixty forty mix.
Which is what our investment policy statement says, so we don't have to change it. This matches.
Okay, yeah, so we don't have to change the investment policy statement.
Right, I think that's pretty standard.
Yeah.
They're they're obviously designing these funds to meet that kind of need.
So I guess. I I do not have expertise in this field, right? As I look at at some of these options, some do look better than others. Is this the kind of thing where we would want to reach out to them and have them give us a presentation or give us literature? Before we dive in and say, yes, we definitely want to do this?
Well, for literature, I think what we could do is simply download the prospectus or the summary prospectus. The full prospectus will give us a bigger picture. But I don't think for the amount of money we have, about a million three. I don't think any, and I could be wrong, but I don't think any of them are going to come down here. With staff time for a million three.
Or a Zoom meeting or whatever.
It's one point five, just.
A little higher, okay.
I I, you know, what's two hundred thousand dollars?
Sooner or later, you're talking real money.
Yeah, really, yeah.
I did, as the last step, take a look at the returns from asset strategies from seventeen up through twenty three. And look at those same returns across the four that I just happened to grab. Okay?
Michael, if you, I think what, from what I understand of these, I agree that we're probably not going to get particip- um presentations from them, but perhaps it would be good to invite Patrick Wing to come and present to us about these options and kind of help us understand. Um, I know some of us have reached out to him individually, but it might be something that then could be part of the public meeting to justify decisions.
I like that. That's a good idea.
I can ask him if he'd do this. Now, one thing we have to remember in issuing the invitation. Uh, Marquette Associates is in the same line of work as asset strategies. In other words, they are advisors on accounts like this. And I don't think we need to pay for that layer of management. So I don't know if he'd be willing to come down for business. He's not going to get. See what I'm saying?
He actually said we can't afford him. So you're kind of asking to come down on his own time for something that's never going to net for him. I don't know. He's a very nice gentleman, but he does come down to the county often.
He's got uh three. I think it's only three funds that he that they are advisors on. The Length of Service Awards Program, the County's OPEB, and the Sheriff's Retirement.
Okay, so if we don't, if we don't think, go ahead.
I mean, I think the best ways to ever, you know, everything's online, the history of the each fund and the summary analysis is pretty easy to understand if you want to get down the weeds. But the history of the funds are are online or on the website.
I I mean, from my read of it, to me, you know, the Vanguard Fund seems like a good option of these four.
If you look up in item seven, where you have the operating expense. The the investment policy statement says that it has to be point seven five or less. So that one would sort of self-select out.
Which one?
Oh, item number.
T. Rowe Price.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look at that.
It's not over by much, but it is out of boundary. So what I did, and this might be useful to you all. In item number eight, I took a look at the year and then I looked down and circled every time one of those beat asset strategies during that year.
Let's see that document. Let's beat the Google.
So in seventeen, American Balance beat them. MSF did not. T. Rowe Price did and Wellington did. And I went through all of the years that we had for asset strategies and did the same thing.
All right, so so folks, what do we think in terms of next steps? We've decided we want to leave the building of asset strategies. We are now outside. Where do we want to go? How do we want to figure out where to go next?
Should we look at the um for the for the three that uh have the uh um the sales charges is a blow that's point seven five. Should we look? Look at all all the the other threes, summary perspective?
Yes. So then do we want to get, do we want to omit T. Rowe Price and do we want to look at the prospecti for the remaining three? And go from there?
Can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sharon, what do you think?
Yes, sorry, I have to come off mute.
Speak there.
I have another one that I would consider removing from this list is the Massachusetts Financial Services, just because a Morningstar rating of three doesn't particularly excite me.
John, you used the term sales charges. Should have been operating expenses.
Okay, that's a better term. I like that term better. All right, so for our next meeting, why don't we plan to review the prospecti for American Funds and Vanguard? And let's look at their literature that they produce. John, I really appreciate you doing all this work and kind of laying the foundation. I think why don't we look at our two finalists and then we can continue the conversation next month? And go from there. So our homework is to read the prospecti for those two funds. And I will try to get those links and share them out. Um, I don't know if I'm using the Latin correctly. That sounds right. Okay, any other thoughts or ideas about this plan or where we're at?
Question is just to verify. So we're looking at these because they will give a higher return and less cost.
If if you look at the data, I took off asset strategies. And then did the same, grabbed the same yearly data for these four. And I, like I said, I went down and circled the bottom line in item eight. D, as in David. Vanguard Wellington only missed beating asset strategies in one year. Okay?
Okay.
As an example. The first one, American Balanced. There were two years when they did not beat asset strategies. But what's also interesting? If you look on um the first page, item five. Uh, American Balanced. Average risk, above-average return. That's against all the funds in this category. Of which, as I say, I think there's seventy seven. So they take a look in the category. And Morningstar does and says, oh, these these are taking about an average risk. How does their return look? If you look at item number C, T. Rowe Price. They're taking average risk and getting a higher return. Okay, something they're doing is pushing their results out there higher for supposedly only taking average risk compared to their competitors. I don't know what that is. Then if you look at item eight.
John, I think we should maybe leave it here. Yeah, let's keep moving, but thank you for this and uh we will review the prospectuses and come back in January.
So the first one and the last one, American and Vanguard.
Vanguard. All right, can we move forward from this conversation? Anything else? Michael, do you want to add anything?
No, thank you for your careful consideration of of how to most effectively use these funds. Obviously, they somehow have to be of benefit to our retired employees, but everything seems just fine there. Um, I I think time for new trustee business.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a had one more question. Thank you for doing this, by the way.
You're welcome.
Um, would you mind sending us? Would you you did a comparison to asset strategies on number eight? Would you mind doing that for the other ones? Just comparison to where they are, like the fund category, the risk and all that? I don't know if you understand what I'm.
Let me huddle up with you afterwards because I think what you're asking is in here. I think. And maybe I don't understand what you're asking.
Well, you have on the sheets, you have the four categories, different ones, one through seven, where you do the comparisons. So if you did one for asset strategy, the same way on each.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Yes, I only compared them in against.
Each other, right?
If I can, if I can find that data.
All right, thanks, everybody. Um, let us move on to new trustee business. The item on here is electing our officers for next year. Our officer terms go on the calendar year, January through December. As I said last month, I think it's time for me to relinquish this chair and let somebody else preside over this wonderful board. And so um I wanted to sort of open a conversation about who is interested in which roles potentially. We have president, vice president, treasurer. And then we can vote as we need to, depending on kind of the interest and if we have multiple candidates, a single candidate, wherever we land. So I guess starting with the president role, who's interested? Comes with a secret service detail. Yeah, well, the band plays when you walk in the room.
You you get lots of emails from me.
Could be arm twisted to be considered.
Anybody else? Sharon, looking at you, please pipe in if if you're interested, just because you're not here in the space. All right, what about vice president? Who is interested there?
Be interested in continuing.
John would be interested in vice president. Anybody else? Okay, treasurer?
I can stay. I'd be interested.
Tressa and Judith, okay. Anybody, um, the president role, thank you for having being your arm being twisted. Anybody else interested who would not require a twist of the arm?
I think Sharon would be a great candidate.
I do appreciate that, but I just started a new job three weeks ago and that's why I'm holding back because I don't know if I I'm I'm uncertain about my schedule. It used to be I got every other Friday off. The new job does not allow every other Friday, so I'm having to play with things and I just don't know if I'll be available.
Congrats on the new gig.
I'll consider.
You'll consider it? Okay, okay. Um, all right, so then as I see it, we have a couple folks for president. We have Tressa and John. We have John for vice president, for treasurer. We got Judith and Tressa in the mix possibly. That makes sense, right? Um, okay, so I guess we need to do elections. Is, are we comfortable just voting openly? That's fine. Right?
We do it any other way?
Yeah, I don't know. We write names on a slip of paper, I guess. Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so then let's start with the elections for president. Again, we have John Walters. We have Tressa at lack in the mix. Does anybody want to say a word about? Anything before we vote?
Like Sharon would be a good candidate.
The people have spoken, Sharon. Okay.
Um, I have a question. Why would you want that type? I mean, what what would you bring to the table just?
Well, um I'll be I'll be frank about it. I hate numbers. But I love the investing side. So I think I can bring some strengths there. I have a fairly good grasp of uh how to run a meeting, rules of order. I'm no stranger to having served on a lot of boards, three in the county right now. Um, a whole bunch back when I was in Virginia. And or as a staff person and supported boards. So just, you know, continuation of my civic service. I think I've got one year left on my term of office. That'd be a nice way to capstone a career.
So um for me, I've been on the board for a little bit, so I've been very familiar with how the libraries all work. Um, I have demonstrated my support for the libraries, for the. Um, I have demonstrated my support for the libraries, for their great work that they do. Um, I've always been a positive advocate for the libraries and, um, as a president, I would continue to be that strong advocate for the libraries and everything they bring to the community.
Okay, all right, so all those in favor of voting for, for John as president, please raise your hand.
Please vote, okay.
All right, all those in favor of Tressa as president, please raise your hand. Okay, so I, I count four to two. So I think Tressa, that's you. All right.
I think that means that you're going to be treasurer, Judith.
I pass on all the secret codes to you, Judith.
Goodness gracious.
Thought we could cut the overhead by having double service.
Yeah, right? All right, so then,
President and Treasurer.
All those in favor of John Johnson as vice president, please raise your hand. All right, congrats, John. All those in favor of Judith as treasurer, please raise your hand. There we go. Congratulations. Thank you, Tressa. Thank you, John. Thank you, Judith. Um, y'all will be great leaders for this mighty board.
I have one follow-up piece of business. From the Saint Mary's County Library, a hip hip hooray to Michael Dunn. Thank you on behalf of the employees of Saint Mary's County Library for thoughtful and important services. The Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. Your patience and wisdom have ensured the library has thrived. We thank you for your outstanding service. A whole bunch of people have signed it.
Oh.
So thank you so much for what you've done, Michael.
Thank you. That is very kind of you. Thank you.
Greatly appreciated.
It is a pleasure working with all of you knuckleheads and, uh, I am happy to sit in one of the farther seats and we'll keep doing this good work.
You have one last, you, piece of business. Your signature is required on a document I gave you.
Yes, should we discuss after?
After.
Okay, okay.
So, um, uh, the upcoming dates, a reminder that libraries close the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, as you voted last year. Um, on the thirty-first, we close at five P M. and we're closed on the first. Um, the county budget request is due January tenth, which coincidentally is the day of your next meeting. Um, so Tressa, I will, um, ahead of time be sending you uh, that document to review and sign. You can sign that day if you want to. But by four o'clock in the afternoon, I have to run four printed copies of that budget request over to the county. So, um, Belinda, um, will be working on preparing approximately thirty-seven different Excel forms, which I shall carefully review. And then I write up a, um, narrative about our request. So, um, that, uh, is kind of the next big order of business for the library. But I wish everybody a happy holiday and thank you for your service to the library and for all you do for the library.
Michael, did I misunderstand? At the commissioner's meeting, did they adjust the Christmas holiday county employees?
They did, but not really. Not really in kind of compliance with that. Um, they, so Christmas Eve is a Tuesday, Christmas Day is a Wednesday, and they just said, come in Monday, nah, let's just go ahead and give folks a day. So we were there.
All right, uh, can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Sure, move.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Dorothy. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed or abstained? All right, the motion passes. A wonderful holiday season, everybody.